Here we go, guys. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting, August 1st, 2024, 501 Main Street, 5:30 PM. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call?
Crenshaw?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Garcia? Cackley?
Here.
Dade?
Here.
Andrews?
Here.
Tillman?
Here.
Bryant?
Here.
Greenwald?
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Item number four, Mayor's Correspondence. Friday, tomorrow, August 2nd, 2024, we have Fish Fry at the K of C Hall, 5:30 PM, with Bingo Saturday night, starting at 5:00 PM. Back-to-school Festival at the Trinity United Methodist Church, this is their 20th year, it was start 20 years ago by the Trinity Methodist Church, the United Way has joined on and made it a much bigger event. Come join the fun and get your free school supplies from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. Then, Western Illinois Thrashers starts up Friday night, Saturday and Sunday, they have fun, food games, and all kinds of agricultural history. Saturday, August 3rd, 2024, the Keokuk Animal Shelter Dog Wash at the Keokuk Police Department from 9:00 to noon, and it is run by donations. Then, Shadows of Blue are playing in the Rand Park Pavilion at 7:00 PM. There will be Dog House Food Truck with Food for B Y O B. Item number five is citizens' request. If we have anybody that would like to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and let us know what we need.
Hello, my name is Nancy Callaway, I'm leading 101 North Second Street. Sorry, my English is my second language, I hope so you can understand what I say today.
You?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I write this paper, I translate in English, so I hope so you guys understand. I am writing this letter because I think it's unfair why the city gone to this extent sending me to the court, and because all this situation due to the continual course. Normally, I had the court, the citation, 2:00 PM, but because I had dyslexia, I changed the numbers. So when the last time I go to the court, I was, the citation was night duty, but I think was 2:00 PM, and I lose the court. In order to defend myself with all the paper that I had about the city complaining that my house isn't vacant, and also they want me put the application for no vacant, okay? So, since I live in United States more than 20 years, I not had any issue, even any ticket for my car or anything. Since I moved to this area, I start live the American dreaming, but the opposite, and humor in this place, in this time, you know? So, I moved from California, I brought this house online, for online. I see pictures, I decide buy because when, after the COVID, really, California was very bad, very bad. So, I started doing something, like many people looking something different. So, I buy this house online for $10,000. My intention was remodeling in my free time. So, when I see this house, the picture was the people live there, children, two different families, they have cat, they have dog. When I clean it, we really found all these people live there in this house. So, when we move here, we put five cars there, the neighbor called the police, they not asking anybody. They called the police, my police machine, probably they see all my cars registered, everything. So, this is my first thing. I start cleaning all this house with my husband cleaning for month, was going in my free time, because when we move here was different than California. California is a bigger city. So, they clean everything, we not found a yard, all was very different here. The plan was live in this house because we saw that somebody lived here, family lived there. So, then, I spent time in cleaning the house, looking for yard, it make this area sense for me, because I like really this area, I like retiring this area. I almost 61. My plan was, one day, finish this house, it has some lead there, it's an income for this house. This was the first thing. So, then, I received the paper for the city because I had the toilet, no, what's the toilet, what is this, the bathtub there, I get this, the paper, because it was there. I explain that it's there because I start cleaning where I put this, all this thing, you know? Every week, we try paying all this, I have the receipt, you know? They troll the, what's it called, the basura? Yeah, no. Then, my neighbor called because the grass was supposed, they need cut, but we miss one week, because my husband, every single week, or every two weeks, they came and cut the grass, and I start doing the construction in the house. So, I get a ticket for $160. And then, I get the paper that I need registered for a vacant. I try negotiation with Pam, with the other lady, also they go to my house, I show the house they need a lot repaired. For you guys, no, because I don't want to spend too much time or lose your time. My car registered is this address. My taxes since 2020, I had all the receipt, everything, what I say is true, is by this house. My credit card, my Honda car, and also my license, the construction, general construction is registered with this house. Since I moved here, I was so happy because I found finally a lot friends, because California is very bigger. My English improve a lot, my health improve a lot. Also, I disclosed that I had arthritis, and my bone is no good. I come back and working in construction because construction pay more. I working in Walmart, in the pharmacy, but they not pay enough for me fixing all this house and other project I have. And still, I feel younger, but with all this problem I had, I can't sleep right now. I start shaking, all this effect. When my children say, all my children live in California, say, why you do it there? You don't have anybody there. But, I want working, be myself, and let alone my children. I can support myself, but with all this problem, I can't. My intention, the only my intention is save this house. I can sell this house long time ago. My intention is keep this house, probably I am love this house, we, because they making me busy there, making me busy, me, because construction is my hobby. This is my intention. And then, this house, they have history there, you know? I love all this older house, I don't know, but this attraction me. But please, review all what I say today, because right now, I own the city. This is the other part, I had a paper, I don't know who I own, why you guys want for me? Because, I don't know. Sorry, I ignorant in this part. I had college, I study, but in this part, I never had experience in it. I don't know why you guys want, because I put my extra money, time in this project. But I don't know why you guys want. Please review my paper, it help me in this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. So, have you spoke with Pam and Casey, who would have sent you the letters? Is there a time or a place, Pam, that we can get together again, or do you know more? We cannot go on any farther?
So, if I can just give a little explanation, the Callaways bought the house in 2021. They lived there a little while, I believe. Then, they purchased a building in Quincy, which they've been fixing up. Maybe that is neither here nor there, but the property that they built or bought was 101 North Second. The roof is horrible on it. We've, once the vacant property registry came out, they were sent a letter, just like everyone else, they could have appealed that. No one's living there, it's vacant. But they did come in after they got the letter to get a permit. And when you get a permit, you can, as long as you are moving along steadily on the property of fixing your issues, we just leave it alone. You don't have to register, you just keep the property up, continue to work. This was not happening, it was not happening. The building permit was submitted for the roof, 52323. The roof could have been done within a few months. I'm not saying that, so, all we've asked them to do was register the property. They couldn't get insurance on it. I think they, I don't know if they have or have not gotten insurance, but there was a citation issued, they went to court, or it was, the judge gave them more time, they came back. There was another date set, I believe that, which we had no idea, that they didn't know, you know, the time was messed up. So, the judge did, they did, it was guilty. It's a $6,000 fine. At this point, there's nothing we can do with the courts on the actual fine. We've let them know that they could, you know, we've had numerous, numerous meetings with the Callaways, numerous.
Okay.
I don't really, you know, I'm not, if we could just get them to get the roof done, get it buttoned up, and keep the yard taken care of, you know, we're going to try to talk to the council about changing some, the codes on the vacant property registries. We do still want some insurance on it, but I think that if people can get them buttoned up, get the roofs on them, you know, windows, make sure they're clean and they're taken care of, that maybe a registry fee is only $50 instead of it doubling every, as long as you continue to try to work on them. I'm not really sure what the answer is, but at this point, we've told them they need to seek an attorney, that we can't give them legal advice on the court situation.
Okay, all right.
And then, I'm Keith Callaway, basically her husband, and I've basically been in dialogue, mostly with Pam. And then, when we came to even buying online, Tim Peevler was someone that Pam had gotten in contact with, and he looked at it, said, "I'll send you pictures, but that's not really the scope of work I really want to sign a, you know, a purchase agreement on." And for me, it was kind of cool, because I've had family members in the past, I've had homes that were similar, that were restored, they didn't look like that. And again, we did buy it online, because Nancy and I were going to go to Peru and then COVID. As far as how we ended up here was, she's like, "I've let you play with cars, so I want to buy some houses since we can't go to Peru." So, we ended up with a few. And this was another one, it was like going to the checkout at Walmart, "I'll get a 20-ounce diet coke on the way out," because we got the place for a song. And then, when we found out later, "Hey, by the way, this actually belonged to John Fletcher Sanford," you know, who was like the dean of the medical college here, and then, I guess he was an Illinois senator, I think, at one time. He was like, "Hey, this is kind of cool," you know, so we actually got something nice. And for us, we didn't come here initially looking for jobs, until it got down to realizing that, hey, this isn't going to be the same cost as doing a stick house, like what we're used to, that's like five or six years old, maybe 10 years, you go and redo, you know, this is a whole different animal. And as opposed to just dealing with the roof, we actually were dealing literally with the structure of the house. And we've never had the basement or anything, that literally all the walls are pretty much all brick, that had five fireplaces that have been, the chimneys were knocked out, the widow's walk was removed. And as opposed to working on just exclusive the roof, we wanted to make sure we had a solid foundation to work with, and that the floor joists, roof joists, everything was all, and the trestles were good, stairwell was good, so we could walk up and actually start disassembling the roof. And then, as opposed to one house, you know, we ended up buying, we used a house, and it's a bank building, our living room's basically like this, it's a bank building in Washington Park, next to Mercantile. And in a nutshell, we ended up having to go back to work to, and we're scrambling, because we want to do this particular price correctly, because we've had certain individuals, "Oh, you just put like, you know, half inch or three, three-quarter inch plywood up there, you know, two-by-fours, or four-by-eights, and then throw the asphalt shingles after you get the underlayment in there." Well, hang on, this house actually had two-by-ten by whatever the length wood, then the actual squared nails on it, and then there was the underlayment, and then they had some other wood that was actually on the top, and then the shingles. And then, when we were digging it up, we had four layers of asphalt shingles, and then we got down to the original shaker shingles with the squared nails in it. At the same time, we're also want to, we have found people that do and help us getting the chimneys back up, the widow's walk, and then add in what Chris and Eddie had done, when they've incorporated the other. And I think what hurt us was the fact that, you know, we thought we were okay, and then all of a sudden, to get into this issue, and it's not between Pam and myself, but what it came down to is when you guys actually issued the ordinance, and then did not have any kind of a backup plan, as what can we do to help fund some of these people? Because we've understood that, you know, there's close to 200 more other individuals that are in the same situation as us. And some of the other areas we've lived in, it was like, there was monies that were available, that would actually help with the rehab, and it would build a community. And I've seen it in the downtown areas, like Santa Barbara, California, where it was all, like going downstate, main here, but State Street, and it had like thrift shops, and I don't want to get too far into it, but all of a sudden, it turned to where now, you know, a little bit of renovation, a little bit of money, money's going into it, you know, hey, you got an Apple Store, Restoration Hardware, Rainforest Cafe, Cheesecake Factory kind of places in there. And it went from just local to where you actually have tour buses with people coming in from all over the world that are actually hitting that area. So, bottom line is, we did find the insurance, because it's been, that was part of the requirement that you got had, was literally we needed to come with like a $30,000 binder, or some kind of a letter of credit, and we're doing this out of pocket. So, it's not like we just went to the bank, okay, you know? We wanted, and we do have the integrity of doing it, but at the same time, it's like, when into the courts, I think the only person that really benefited was literally the guy that's taking everyone to court right now. So, and that's my piece. And then, for anyone that's out there, if you're televising like what we do, because I'm on the Adams County Board, I did get in contact with Kristen Vander Mullen, and this 2025, there's actually grant money that will be available if someone wants to go into the Historical Society, and actually have their homes registered in the state and with the National Registry of Historic Homes, which is where we're at as well. So, like I said, we've had a good dialogue, but it literally came down to what I've seen is lack of forethought on what can we do to make this work where everyone's conforming, and at the same time, getting the homes where they're actually restored. And what we have in Quincy is literally, it's like what I call a smash and grab. You have these beautiful pioneering homes that, well, no one's leaving, or they haven't paid their taxes on it, and they're all dilapidated, so they're basically being destroyed, and the city's having to pay for the, literally to level them. And then, it goes to like the land bank with the property, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Item number six, consent agenda. Minutes of the regular city council meeting and workshop of July 18th, 2024, resolution approving ownership update for Walgreens number 05886 liquor license, resolution approving the liquor license for Lake Cooper Foundation Big Dam Street Festival, Class C retail alcohol license term of five days effective September 25th through the 30th, 2024, reappointment of Dev Kadash and Susan Hannan to the Building and Housing Advisory Board term to expire September 19th, 2027, reappointment of Sylvia Mills-Eckels and Reese Langendahl to the Keokuk Housing Authority, term to expire September 5th, 2026, reappointment of Dev Kadash to the Human Rights Commission, term to expire September 19th, 2027, appointment of Gary Mortimer to the Historic Preservation Commission, term to expire September 1st, 2027, appointment of Kyle Riddle to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board fulfilling the term to expire November 2nd, 2025, appointment of Joe McUnus to the City Planning Commission, term to expire May 14th, 2029, resignation of Charles Reden from the Historic Preservation Commission effective immediately, motion to pay the bills and transfers listed in Register's number 5419 through 5421. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda, including the consent agenda? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, motion to approve second reading of the ordinance amending Chapter 5.20.020, setting sanitation fees effective September 1st, 2024 through fiscal year 2028 to 2029. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Aye.
Any discussion? The ordinance sets fees starting September 1st, 2024, through fiscal year 2028, 29. In June of this year, the city received a correspondence from Moody's Ratings Analytical in reference to the terms of the bond issued in 2020. The new garbage trucks not being met by the sanitation rates set forth in the current ordinance. Moody's indicated that they would most likely lower the city's ratings since the coverage requirement is a contractual obligation. Also, the tipping fees have continued to increase, and the current rates will keep a negative balance in the sanitation fund. Tim Oswald of Piper Sandler validated this information and determined that the following fees should be, would be adequate. September 1st, 2024, $27 a month. July 1st, 2025, $28 a month. July 1st, 2026, $29 a month. July 1st, 2027, $30 a month. July 1st, 2028, $31 a month. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I need a roll call.
Crenshaw?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Cackley? Dade? Andrews?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Greenwald?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number eight, consider resolution authorizing demolition of the structure located at 22 North 18th Street. Do I have a motion to approve?
All moved.
22 North 18th property has been a nuisance and unsafe to occupy since 2022. The structure's foundation has failed and caused the southwest wall to collapse. There is also damage present at the rear foundation wall. Property owner Jody Humes has been notified of the deteriorating condition of the structure. He has not made any effort to communicate with the staff. Two bids were received to complete the demolition, when Company of Warsaw bid $15,000, and CCS was the low bid of $11,800. The property owner will be billed for the demolition. If not paid within 30 days, a lien will be placed on the property. Do we have any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number nine, consider resolution approving the installation of two suction pumps at the bulk fueling station. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Aye.
The fueling pumps at the bulk fueling station on Carby Lane, which provide unleaded and diesel fuel for the city, as well as five other public service entities, are so antiquated that the parts are no longer available to make the necessary repairs. One of the diesel pumps recently stopped pumping gas and cannot be repaired due to the obsolete parts. A quote was received from R.L. Honer Company of Quincy, Illinois, the company that services the fueling station, to replace the pumps with two new suction pumps in the amount of $32,012. This quote includes installation. Do we have any more discussion?
I have some questions. Did you, after receiving this bid, go online to research what those particular models of pumps sold for on the internet?
No, I have no knowledge of any pump systems, or especially gas pumps.
Okay, I spent a little time earlier today, I could not find this precise model number, but I found one with very comparable features, yes, thank you. And their price is $11,856. The one I found has a manufacturer's adjusted retail price of $98.15, but it is on sale now for $83.43. That's $3,500 difference, and that would come up to $7,000 difference in price.
You want the city to try to buy them outright, as opposed to going through the...
Do we have city employees that would have the skills to install these?
That's why we have R.L. Honer, they do all the servicing and repairs and maintenance on our gas pumps, we have no city We have no city employees that.
Okay.
Take care of pumps.
All right.
As far as I know, I think that's kind of a, more of a specialty.
I just think that's a significant difference. Maybe that's the way they're going to make their profit in this venture, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Like I said, I haven't researched buying gas pumps before.
Okay. And did you solicit bids from any other entity because it only came in as one bid?
We did not. And I, I guess we didn't advertise or anything. We just took the bid from the company that currently has our contract.
Okay.
We can try to.
I've had people complain to me about number of bids on items that we pass, and that's a concern. That's all my questions.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number 10. Motion to approve a second pool credit for Janice Wallingford. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
A request to have a second pool credit was received from Janice Wallingford. Wallingford sent the following. This is Janice Wallingford, and I used my one time filling my pool in June. After filling it up to the skimmer, realized that there was a crack that we sealed, but it did not hold. Ended up having to replace the pool on July 24, 2024, and am now requesting to please credit off sewer while I fill it up. The pool holds 12,000 gallons. I would really appreciate it. Thank you, Janice Wallingford. Ms. Wallingford is requesting a sewer credit for July or August billing cycle. The city council approves sewer credits for pool filling during the months of May and June. Outside of the approval timeframe, adjustments to pool filling require approval of the city council. Do I have any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Hi Kathy, just.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine. When I emailed about the department being incorrect for airport, what department will this actually come from? Since it says airport and that's not correct.
No, the airport down here at the bottom where it says airport, that just was not taken off when they were pasting or copying or pasting. That's got nothing to do with that. What, it will come out of the, it'll come out of what, Brian?
Which department?
Which department do the credits come from?
Well, yeah, because it lists airport. So what would the correct one be?
Imagine it be a split between wastewater treatment and sewer maintenance. I'm not 100% sure because all that, all that ran through the.
It's just revenue that won't come in through water work, so it'll just affect their water bill.
I don't think it directly reflect, it doesn't directly affect any of our budgets, operating budgets.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thanks.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 11, council liaison reports.
I don't.
Okay, go ahead. I keep interrupting you.
I don't really have a liaison report, but I just did want to mention that the personnel committee meeting is going to be on Monday. We're going to meet with Trish from Task Force. Now that the job posting for the city administrator has closed, she has collected all the resumes and applications, and we're going to meet with her on Monday.
Anybody else? Item number 12, staff reports.
I sent an email out last week. I don't know if everybody had a chance to read it, but the city was notified that we did not receive the comprehensive neighborhood revitalization grant, which would have gave us funds totaling around 1.7 million. We have not heard from the state what the reasoning was on the scoring. So regional planning asked if we would like to try to apply again when it was available. And once we get the information from the state, you know, maybe change the application up a little bit and try again. So if everybody's okay with that, we'll, we'll try it again.
Thanks Pam. I know you guys in the committee worked really, really hard on that, and it was a great, great plan. It really was. And of course, we don't know how great the other plans were that somebody else did. So, but thank you for all that hard work. Item number 13, new business. Item number 14, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move. Second.
All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Let's go home, we don't have a workshop.